Good evening, everyone. And welcome to tonight's City Council meeting. Before we start the meeting, could I please have Jesse Reynos from the Word of Life come forward for the invocation?
Let's close our eyes and go in this invocation. Lord, we come before you in Jesus' name. We thank you, oh God, for this opportunity. Thank you for this city, Los Banos, oh God. We ask, Lord God, that you would give the council members and the mayor wisdom and understanding, oh God. Help them, Lord God, in every decision, oh God, in every act that they make, oh God, and everything, every decision that they go through, oh God. Lord, that you would give them the wisdom and the understanding, oh God. Lord, thank you for this city council meeting. Lord, we ask that you would protect the citizens of Los Banos, that you would protect, oh God, the officers and the firefighters, oh God, that you would protect, oh God, the EMTs, oh God, that you would protect, oh God, the residents here in Los Banos, oh God. And thank you, Lord God, again, for this town, oh God. Lord, we pray, oh God, that you would have your hand upon it, Lord. And thank you for this city council meeting, Lord. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. I'd like to call to order the May fifteenth meeting of the Los Banos City Council. And Chief, would everyone please stand for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Before we start, I'd like to extend a warm welcome and thank you, students, for being here from Pacheco High School. And you are representing the class of Mr. Delacruz in government. So again, thank you for being here. You're welcome anytime, and it's good to see all of you. All right, so with that, I would like to have roll call. Director Maloney?
Maria?
Here.
Johnson Santos?
Yes.
Jones?
Lewis?
Volalta?
Here. We do have a quorum. Let's go on to item four, consideration of approval of agenda. Do I have a motion? Mrs. Santos?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Mrs. Lewis?
Second.
It's been motioned by Johnson Santos, second by Lewis, to approve the agenda as stated. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Public forum. Members of the public may address the city council members on any item of interest that is within the jurisdiction of the city council, which includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items, and speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the council chamber informational table. When you approach the podium, please state your name and your city of residence. And if you have a cellphone, would you please place them on vibrate or turn them off? Before we start, I would like to welcome the police officers to come forward.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor at City Council. My name is Justin Melton. I'm a sergeant with the Police Department. I live and work in the city. I've been here for about fifteen years. Tonight I stand before you because it is Police Officers Memorial Day. We are here to pay tribute to two of our fallen officers. We worked with the local business and came up with these shadow boxes, which were -- retired officer Cindy Hoskins was instrumental in getting that completed. It came out beautifully. I would like to read a document that was prepared by retired Sergeant Kerry Reed, who has since passed, but he presented this in May seventh of two thousand and three. So I'd like to read that document now. This is, once again, in honor of our two fallen officers. Mr. Mayor and City Council, today we must recognize two men for the sacrifices they made for the city of Los Banos. Their names are placed on the Officer Down Memorial Page, the California National Law Enforcement Memorials. Their names and stories will join the over sixteen thousand other names and stories of American law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty. We don't honor them because they are saints. As cops, we are all fragile human beings. The strongest of us have moments of weakness, the most righteous of us have moments of hate, and the most convincing of us have moments of doubt. We honor them because on two separate nights, two men went to work and two men failed to make it home, not because of their actions, but because of their profession. A Los Angeles police chief, August Volmer, once was quoted as saying, "There is no higher calling than that of a policeman. I would rather be a policeman than a president." At approximately the same time, the Los Banos City Deputy Marshal Frank Reel gave his life for that calling. On Sunday, January thirtieth, nineteen twenty-one, at approximately nine p.m., Marshal Reel walked into the Olson and Bicinelli Pool Hall moments before a masked gunman entered through the back. During the robbery, Reel was shot in the back and died in that downtown pool hall. Speculation for the cold-blooded shooting was that they recognized Reel as the night watchman. The gunman was never found. Deputy Reel was a widower, and he left seven children. Four were underage. Outside of the family, this incident wasn't well-known, even for people who have lived in Los Banos for over eighty years. But we pledge tonight that this will not be forgotten eighty years from now. On Sunday, August fourteenth of nineteen forty-nine, on the last day of his life, Officer Robert Terry Mackey responded to a man with a gun call on Third Street between H and I, about two and a half blocks from where we are standing now. He became an officer in March of that year after having worked with his dad in a cabinet-making shop. As he stepped out of his -- correction. As he stepped out of his patrol car, he sent a partner around the back. The partner heard Mackey talking to the suspect and then heard shots fired. When he returned to the front, Mackey was lying in the street, mortally wounded, with a shotgun blast to the face. The suspect fled the scene, and within hours, he was found, shot, and killed. When baseball player Darrell Kyle died last year, the baseball game scheduled for that day was canceled. The next day, players took a vote. After agonizing over the decision, they decided to play the game. After Officer Mackey was killed, there was no canceling the rest of the shift, no going home to recover, and no vote to see if they would work the next day. There is no luxury of grief, only an obligation of protection twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, whether it is in the quietest times or the most tragic. Deputy Marshal Reel and Officer Mackey are forever bonded together. Through badges, a bond is passed from officer to officer, generation to generation. At each passing, there is a challenge to the new officer to uphold the honor of those that came before. We have changed the front of the badges over the years from stars to shields, but the backs remain blank. It is blank like a mirror to reflect the officer's integrity. Every misstep scratches that mirror. The more scratches, the less integrity. Where there is a lack of integrity, there is an abundance of inequity. That is why officers go through written tests, oral interviews, background tests, polygraphs, and a six-month academy. As was once stated, you don't get up one day and apply because you can't find anything else to do. You have to want to become a policeman. Whatever an officer does in work or their personal life is public. Even in private moments when the officer thinks no one is around, there is always he and God, and he can't fool either one. Chiefs have always decided the front of the badge. Officers always determine the back. In an episode of the original Dragnet from nineteen sixty-seven, a captain describes the badge this way. Quote, "That is why a hunk of metal means something and why it always will. It is not something we hide behind. It is something we live up to," end quote. That was true from the night watchman of nineteen twenty-one, and it holds true to the night watchman working now, the same badge that cost two of our own their lives. Mr. Mayor and City Council, on behalf of Frank Reel and his family, and Robert Terry Mackey and his family, we accept this proclamation. I thank City Council and the city for their support. Once again, this was written by retired and late Sergeant Kerry Reed, and it was presented in May of two thousand and three. I thank you all for your time, and please stop by the Police Department and take a look at these. The shadow boxes came out beautifully. And I'd like to take a moment and thank retired officer Cindy Hoskins. We can give her a round of applause for her efforts. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Would you please don't leave?
Sure.
As in the year two thousand and three, when a proclamation is presented, National Police Officers Week is also May twelfth through the eighteenth, and we would like to present this proclamation to you. And it's so important for us, total council. Cindy, thank you so much for what you've done. Detective Melton, thank you. And thank you for taking the time to honor these two men, so they will not be forgotten and they will continue to be remembered. Proclamation recognizing National Police Week, whereas the President of the United States and Congress have designated May fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen, as a Police Officers' Memorial Day, and the week of May twelfth through May eighteenth as National Police Week. National Police Week is observed to honor the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. The police officers of the City of Los Banos Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Los Banos. It is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of the Los Banos Police Department, and that the police officers of our law enforcement agency recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. Whereas the men and women of the Los Banos Police Department unceasingly provide vital public service, and therefore, be it proclaimed that the mayor and the city council members of the City of Los Banos call upon all citizens of the City of Los Banos to observe the week of May twelfth, May to May eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen, as National Police Week, in which all of the people may join in commemorating law enforcement officers, past, present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their community, and in doing so, have established themselves as -- as a reputation that will forever be enduring, and for preserving the rights and the security of our citizens. Now therefore be it proclaimed that we call upon the citizens of the City of Los Banos to observe May fifteenth as Police Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who, through the courageous deeds, have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community or have become disabled in the performance of duty, and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of the fallen heroes. And by the grace of God, may we never have anyone else in this predicament.
Thank you.
You are open to come up to the mic in order after someone speaks. So we'll continue with our fire chief, Mason Hurley.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Yes, my name is Mason Hurley. I am a citizen of Los Banos, and I'm the current fire chief for the City of Los Banos Fire Department. I'm honored here today to come up and say a few things about a couple individuals of my department that have been honored this year as firefighters of the year. I want to thank the council for your support. On April tenth of last month, April tenth, we were invited and were able to be part of a ceremony honoring the firefighters of the year throughout Merced County. This is an annual event that we do at the American Legion Hall in Merced, and I want to thank the council for their support at that event. This year, our department, every year, we nominate and honor two firefighters from the City of Los Banos, one paid career firefighter, and also one volunteer. And this year, we have, again, two fantastic individuals that were honored as Los Banos volunteer firefighter and paid firefighter of the year. And tonight, we have Brandon Hope here. Brandon, you come up, please? Brandon is, was nominated and voted by his peers on both sides of the House, the paid staff and the volunteers, as our volunteer firefighter of the year. Our career firefighter of the year this year was Zach Sawyer, Captain Zach Sawyer. He was unable to make it tonight because his, he has to stay home and watch his two young children. So he said, "Thank you for everything, all your support." But I wanted to say a little bit about Brandon. Brandon has, he's been on our department now for a couple years. He is one of those individuals that is always around, not because he has to, not because he's paid to, but because he loves the fire service. It's something, it was something new to him. He knew nothing about the fire service, other than he wanted something good to do for his community. He had graduated here, and he decided this might be a choice that would benefit him in the future. And I'd have to say that, Brandon, I think you made a good choice. We are very proud and happy to have you as part of our team and part of our department. You'll see you come by the station. Brandon is usually there, and he usually talks me into one of those shiny badges that he's wearing, the shields, it's a volunteer firefighter badge, because he wants to look the part, because he does the part. He's out there every day, running calls, training with the entire staff, helping them, cleaning, mopping, whatever needs to be done, Brandon is there to help. And it's recognized by his peers, and it's recognized by me. And I think the citizens of Los Banos are very lucky to have Brandon as part of our department. So I'd like to say congratulations to Brandon, and introduce you one more time to his, Brandon Hope, Los Banos Volunteer Firefighter of the Year.
Brandon is a quiet individual, but he's starting to talk a little more. We're getting it out of him just a little bit.
We wanted to come down and thank you personally for all that you do for the City of Los Banos, and it's important for us to recognize such wonderful talent and free talent. So we hope the best for you, and thank you so much for wanting to be part of our department.
Chief, thank you for bringing this presentation to us this evening. And thank you, all of you, firefighters, volunteers, and permanent. Thank you for being here this evening. The support just means so much, not only to Brandon, but to us, for the brotherhood that you maintain in both the police force and also the fire department. So I know how strong a bond that is, and thank you for what you do. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public forum?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members. My name is Jeff Delacruz, resident of Los Banos and teacher at Pacheco High School. Once again, we are honored to be here, to witness how local politics works. Once again, as we wind down the school year, you know, we only get a little bit of time to teach these guys how government works, and you have to pack in a lot of information in a short period of time, but the goal is to make sure that when we set these guys out into the real world, that they're prepared to not only understand how government works, but also to actively participate in it and continue, not only just continue during class because they have to, but also continue because they want to. And making sure that they're knowledgeable voters, making sure that they understand the issues, making sure that they're educated voters, so that way, when they do go out and vote, they'd actually know what they're doing and understand the, what's going on. So we hope to continue to be here, to be able to continue to do this year after year. Our group is a little bit smaller tonight, but that's because this is kind of a makeup one that we did last month, and so we hope to continue to do this year after year and look forward to the future. So thank you very much for having us, and it's good to be here.
Thank you for coming. Are these, you're all seniors?
Yeah.
Oh, so I'll see you Friday night. You have a real treasure and a teacher with Mr. Delacruz. So, okay. So with that, is there anyone else who wishes to speak at the public forum? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public forum, bring it back to council level, and we'll go on to item six, consideration of approval of consent agendas. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine, and were voted on in one motion, unless removed from the consent agenda by a city council member. And tonight, we have?
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers two one five seven six five through two one six oh two one, in the amount of one million, two hundred and forty-two thousand, nine hundred dollars and seventeen cents. Third quarter investment report for the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen fiscal year. Minutes for the April seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen, city council meeting. City Council Resolution Number six zero seven five, approving the road maintenance and rehabilitation account, proposed project list for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty. City Council Resolution Number six zero seven six, approving and adopting final track map number two thousand and seventeen dash zero one, Stone Creek at Los Banos, The Villages seven, Phase One, Unit Two, and accompanying subdivision improvement agreement, Anderson Homes. City Council Resolution Number six zero seven seven, approving the ground leases between the City of Los Banos and the County of Merced for the Merced County Library and Milliken Museum, and authorize the city manager to execute said leases. City Council Resolution Number six zero seven eight, approving the partial land acquisition of APN four two eight dash oh two one dash oh four three by the California Department of Transportation from the City of Los Banos, and authorize the city manager to execute the required documents for this acquisition. City Council Resolution Number six zero seven nine, approving the increase of expenditures in the amount of twenty-six thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars, and amending the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen fiscal year budget by increasing the appropriation amount for expenditures in the amount of twenty-six thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars related to the police department abandoned vehicle abatement program, and the items are to be approved as submitted.
Is there any city council member who would like to remove an item for discussion? Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to request to remove item F for discussion.
Okay. All right. With that, Mrs. Lewis, do I have a motion? Oh, I'm sorry. Is there anyone else who wishes to remove an item? Okay. Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, I'll, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item F for approval.
Do I have a second? Mrs. Santos?
Second.
Okay. It's been motioned by Lewis, second by Johnson Santos, to approve the consent agenda minus item F. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Okay. Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a question. In the body of the presentation, it indicates that on number six, the various areas that the county would be responsible for paying, such as their water, gas, electricity, power, sewer, and so on, trash. The only other thing that I have is I think there's a parking lot behind Milliken. If it gets to the point where that parking lot is not in good condition, is that going to be the city's responsibility or the county?
That's the city's. This county doesn't have a land lease on that, so that's ours.
Okay.
All the parking areas out there, and I'm not sure which one. There's two parking lots that we have joint use with the school district on, and that's one of them, and the other one is along the museum.
Okay.
And so it's a mutual maintenance, it's mutual maintenance. One of them's owned by us, and we have, and the school district has an easement over it. The other one's owned by them, and we have an easement over it, but it is our maintenance responsibility.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve item F of the consent agenda as submitted.
Okay. Mrs. Santos?
Second.
Motioned by Lewis, second by Johnson Santos, to approve item F on a consent agenda, City Council Resolution Number six zero seven seven. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Government class, these are considered consent agenda items, so they are voted on in one motion. The other items to follow will be individual items, and they will be discussed individually or just for information unless there's no vote. But when you have a consent agenda item, as I asked in the beginning, we could have approved items A through H all at once, but we only approved, we approved all of them minus item F, and then item F was pulled for discussion. And if any further discussion, then it could have been either removed or voted on later on with the approval of the council. So that's why that had happened, but usually, all these are voted on in one motion. Okay? So let's go on to item seven, Central California Irrigation District, CCID presentation, and we have Mr. Chris White, CCID General Manager. Good evening, Chris.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Thank you for inviting us. I have a PowerPoint. Oh, here it is.
Okay. All right. So don't go anywhere. Wait a minute.
So while you're dialing that up, let me give you a little background. I think the reason why this presentation came about is because Councilmember Lewis was at our, at our public meeting, in which we have an annual growers' meeting, and we bring everybody in, we give them dinner, so it gets them there, first of all, and then we give them a presentation on what the water supply situation, what their allocation is, what the cost of water this year, the various projects that we're working on, and so forth. And so I want to just give you something, a similar type presentation. Now, when I do this for the growers, it's a fifty-minute presentation. Okay? So I'm going to give you like a fifteen-minute. Does that work? And I want to start off by telling you that the story for the district starts in eighteen seventy-one. In eighteen seventy-one, there was a man by the name of Bensley who had a dream to build a canal barge traffic system from the Mendota Pool, you know where Mendota is, from the Mendota, actually, from the Teleri Lake Basin to the Mendota Pool, all the way to the delta. And they did a little work in the late eighteen sixties down in the Teleri Lake Basin, and they worked their way up and started work on a canal, our present-day main canal, in eighteen seventy-one. And they started work on this canal, and they brought in -- And they started work on this canal, and they brought in engineers from the East Coast. In fact, they brought a British engineer by the name of Brereton to work on this project. They were advertising back east and in Europe to bring money in for the project. It was the first great canal in California. They built the first 40 miles of that canal in two years. The spill was right here in Los Banas Creek. They made it all the way to Los Banas. That dream, a not very practical dream, because they never really put barge traffic all the way to the Delta, they ran barge traffic up and down the canal system for about seven years, and then the experiment was over, intersected with a much more practical dream. Because before the canal system was started, a young man by the name of Heinrich Kreiser, who bought a non-refundable ticket to San Francisco in the name of Henry Miller, was here buying up land to corner the meat market in San Francisco. And just to put that in historical perspective, 1863, they bought the first 10,000 acres here in the Central Valley, just east of us towards the river. In 1863, what was going on?
Civil War.
Civil War. Yeah. So that was, in historical perspective, that was what was going on. The Great Canal was completed about 80 miles, our present-day main canal, goes right through Los Banas. When you drive and you're going over the canal, going on 152, and you see the Abatour on the right-hand side, that canal there is the Great Canal that came through the area. And it's obviously since the 1870s to today, in order to deal with the modern regulatory environment and everything about water in California, they've had to adapt to the situation. So what I want to do is walk you through the water supply situation, where the district that took over the Great Canal, Central California Irrigation District, where they're at today in water supply, and what some of the surrounding issues are facing the district and facing the city as it relates to water supply. I hope that I figure out how to operate this. Here we go. So I'm going to talk about water supply update, a little bit on the Watershed Coalition, the exchange contractors activities, it's the umbrella organization that the exchange contractors, that the individual districts belong to. We'll talk about the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act, the city's involved in that with the district, and we'll talk about Samhain River Project and subsidence. I'm not going to talk much about the blueprint, but it was on our original agenda that we talked to our growers about. It's a visionary topic about bringing more water in the valley to deal with the water shortages created by the Sigma Act. So what are the present hydrologic conditions? And this is a picture of, you can get this on CD, you can go online, and it's just a picture of all the reservoirs around the state. And I want to just notice something. Those blue bars are an indication of how full reservoirs are, and this was taken off the internet yesterday. And you look around the state, the reservoirs are full. They're plumb full, okay? That's a technical term. You get up and you look at Shasta, it's a 4 million, so it's a 4.3 million acre foot reservoir, it's full. And you put that in comparison, San Luis Reservoir up here is a 2 million acre foot reservoir. All right, so these reservoirs around the state are full. Looking specifically at Shasta, this is the main federal project that feeds water into the Sacramento River. This is where our water presently comes from, it's from Shasta. It's at 4.1 million acre feet. It's very full. This is the temperature control device on the downstream side of Shasta. They have to release water, cold water, and blend it into the Sacramento River for winter run Chinook salmon, for fall run, for spring run. It's in order to keep, to keep that section of the river cool enough so that the fish can reproduce. And so they use this temperature control device so that they're not pulling out the really hot water from up above, they're blending it, and they're getting just the right temperature in the system. This is Lake Orville, this is a state project. This is the one that, there was an emergency over a couple of years ago, they had to evacuate the cities, yep. But you can see, they had the fix in, they got the fix done. The reservoir earlier this year was very low, but the hydrology, the hydrology this year has filled that reservoir up, so we have, they have a full reservoir on the state side. This is Millerton Lake on the other side of the valley near Fresno. This is a, this is a good picture from a water supply there in Millerton as well. This is the backup water supply for the exchange contractors, for my district. If for any reason they're not able to deliver water to us down the Delta-Mendota Canal, they're supposed to release water from Millerton. So this is a good picture for us as well. And then San Luis Reservoir. Now, you look at all of the reservoirs throughout the state of California, and those projects that I talked to you about, Shasta and Folsom and Orville, they're operated such that they put water in the river, the Sacramento River, river waters brought down and pumped in the Delta, either at the Jones Pumping Plant or at the banks on the state side, in order to keep this reservoir filled. All right, because of regulation, look what's happening to the reservoir. That blue line is the line is the, is the present water surface of the reservoir. Now, all these other reservoirs in the state are full, but this one is going down because the pumping in the Delta is restricted, and the amount of water they're pumping in the Delta is a lot less than the demands in this area. And it's because of regulation. This is the snowpack. This snowpack this year across the state's been very good, we're in really good shape from a snowpack perspective as well. So not only is the physical storage in the reservoirs, it's the storage in the snowpack as well is doing very good. So what are the allocations? So the exchange contractors, who is CCID, San Luis Canal Company, Columbia Canal Company, and Fireball Canal Water District, we're at 100% allocation this year. We have a very good water supply situation on the Delta-Mendota Canal. Our West Side CVP neighbors, San Luis Water District is one of them, their offices here in town, they're at a 65% allocation with the reservoirs as full as they are and operation being as restricted as they are. And it's, it's not a good place to be if you're a federal water contractor, with it being as wet as it is this year. Federal, Friant Division Contractors across the valley are at 100% also. I include a group of slides here on the West Side Coalition. We present this to our growers, they've got a lot that they have to go through to comply with the regulations relative to monitoring of nitrates, of groundwater, of flow in and off their fields, testing and so forth they have to do. We spend about 15 minutes going through what the requirements are and what the deadlines are for them. So that's the part of that presentation, so I'll just have that cover slide there. Then we move into the activities of the exchange contractors. This is the umbrella organization that was formed in the 90s, just to protect the exchange contract that the four entities belong to. And so some of the activities that we're involved in is, we recently renegotiated an operations agreement that governs how water is pumped in the Delta, and it was a significant change after several years of negotiations that improves our dry year reliability of us and our neighbors in this area. That was signed by the governor and by the state and federal in December of this last year. It's, and it's big for us in dry years, brings a lot more water into the area. So that, we worked on that, and that came to fruition. There's also some consultation going on, on long-term operations. This is operations of the projects, the state and federal project. There was a presidential memo that was done late last year that directed the agencies to come up with a plan by the end of 2019, and they're on track to do that. And if they do that, there's a, in looking at the operations scenarios, there's a likelihood of them bringing another half a million acre foot south of the Delta, using the latest science, protecting the fish better, but being more efficient in their operations. That's a half a million, that's 500,000 acre feet, that's a big number, potentially by the end of this year.
When was the last storage facility built?
The last storage facility?
Yeah, in California.
The Metropolitan built a reservoir, the Diamond Valley Reservoir, and I'm going to say that's 10 years ago.
10 years ago.
Yeah.
So, but we're still not keeping up with the amount of storage that we need to make California profitable?
In California, we talk a good game, we pass Prop 1, we've got storage projects on the books, and they're just not being built. There's, they're, they're just not being built.
Okay.
We're working on voluntary settlements. The Water Quality Control Board in California is trying to adopt an outflow plan out of the Delta, that if it happens, it's going to really, really cripple the water supply system that we all rely on for irrigation. We're working on a voluntary settlement agreement setup that actually provides outflow to the Delta in a more reasonable way, and something that the water districts can support. And this is across the board. I'm talking water districts from Metropolitan on the south, to water districts in the northern part of California are working on this voluntary settlement. And we're, we're on, we're on track also by the end of this year to bring this to fruition as well. Projects we're working on, we're working on a groundwater banking project up in the Orstember Creek area. We're working on several projects in the Los Banas Creek area. We, we're working to re-operate the Los Banas Creek Detention Dam. The detention dam was built in 1960s and was, it's been used so far as an evaporative pond, but not as a storage facility. And so we've come up with a proposal, we're working with the Bureau to actually pump water into the reservoir when we have it and get it back when we need it. It's just not rocket science, but we're working on that. The operations plan for that will actually put more recharge in the creek. There's benefits to the area, including the City of Los Banas. For that to happen, we're, so we're working on that. We're working on another storage project up in the Patterson area called the Del Porto Canyon Reservoir Project. And then we're working on the Red Top Subsidance Reduction Project. I got more slides on that in a few minutes. But those four projects, the recharge and recovery projects are about $30 million worth of project we're working on over the next three years. The Del Porto Canyon Project is about a $420 million project. So this is a picture of the Los Banas Creek Storage Project. We put a diversion weir in the creek. We diverted this year 4,500 acre feet when the creek made releases this year and went to the refuges, and the value of that water is about $2 million. So it was, it's been a good project, it's already partially paid for itself. This is a picture of the Del Porto Canyon Reservoir Project. If you're driving past the Patterson exit, you look to the left, you see that nice gun site opening, that's a good place for a reservoir, right there, it's a good place for a dam. That's where that location would be. And that is actually, is named in the most recent Congressman, new Congressman harder in the north part of our district introduced the Save Water Act, HR 2473, I believe, and that project is named in that legislation. Pilot projects underway, we're working on Orstember Creek and in Los Banas Creek. Just some pictures and technical pictures as to what's going on there. Groundwater management activities, we're involved with the various cities. We've got, we were involved with five different cities, Mendota, Dos Palos, Los Banas, Gustine, and Newman, in developing groundwater management plans jointly with each of the cities, and we're working with the City of Los Banas.
Do we have subsidence here?
There is subsidence here, you're on the north end of a subsidence area, but subsidence here over a 50-year period would be like a foot.
Okay.
Okay? You go down to the Mendota Pool, let's see, go east of here, go over the river, soon as you get over the river, you look to the right there, that area was subsiding at a rate of 1.25 feet per year.
Wow.
Up till recently. So, yeah, there's subsidence here, but it's nothing like it in the hot spots.
It's sinking that much?
Yes.
Foot a year.
Yep. It was sinking that much. Actually, we've got a project, one of the projects we talked about here is to reduce or eliminate subsidence in that area, and we will get that done within the next few years. So we'll stop it.
Just a quick comment for the students, subsidence means that the ground is lowering because of groundwater withdrawal, correct?
Correct.
So as you pull water out of the wells, you pull so much out that the ground, it actually holds the ground up, and the ground actually starts to settle and to fall. It was falling at a foot, a foot and a quarter a year.
Foot and a quarter per year?
Yeah. So just to give the kids an idea of what's going on.
Yeah, so the deadlines for Sigma to meet are listed here. We're on track, we're on track with the city to get everything submitted. The good news is that our groundwater situation, because of the surrounding ag and because of what we're doing and recharge and so forth, it's sustainable. And we will, under any, under any measure, meet the, meet the requirements of Sigma jointly with the city, so. We also submitted for grant funding to help us pay for the studies and so forth to get across the finish line. We're participating 50-50 cost share with the city on the plan here in the city, and we're getting 50% of that back through a grant from DWR. So we're within about a month of getting that grant money, and we'll be reimbursing the city when we get it. Maps of the area, maps of the larger GS, the GSAs within the Delta-Mendota sub-basin, goes all the way south of Mendota, all the way up to Pass Patterson. Some of the things that we're working on with that. Water conservation modernization projects that CCID is working on. Some big projects in the south part of the district. Each one of those reservoirs is about a $4 million project. The one on the left is complete and in operation, and the one on the right is, will be done this year, it's just about to go into operation, conserving about 4,000 to 5,000 acre foot on each of these projects annually. This is a blow-up of the Pozo Canal Reservoir, which was that right-hand project. This is looking out over the reservoir, it's near, as it's nearest completion. This is a brand-new long-crested weir that was installed as part of that project. This is looking down in the reservoir. Subsidance solutions, I'm going to talk about, a little bit more about subsidence. This is a map that was done by NASA jointly with DWR about 18 months ago. That's about two years ago now. Time flies. It's about two years ago now. That big blob on the lower right is on the other side of the valley, and the Friant Kern Canal runs through that. They're sinking there at about a rate of about an inch per month, still. The blob, that littler one to the top there, you can see El Nido, everybody knows where El Nido is. All right, so it calls out, I'll call it Red Top in my, because the Red Top Restaurant and so forth that's there, we just call that area Red Top. That area was brought to us in 2012. I got, I got an email sending in a board meeting from the Bureau of Reclamation saying, hey, we just surveyed this area for the River Restoration Program. We surveyed in 2008, we surveyed it again, and things, the elevations aren't matching by a lot, like feet, and can you explain what's going on? And so we, we've had a lot of experience with subsidence over the years, we looked at the well hydrographs, the well levels in the area, and we, well, we told them, we think it's subsidence, what's going on? It actually is a difference of feet in the elevations between those two. Well, the problem was, the area, an area called Sack Dam right next to this area is sinking at a rate of six inches per year, it's not as much as the bad part, but it's the headworks for San Luis Canal Company, and their district is not sinking, and they're a gravity district. They just can't survive that. So we approached the landowners with a solution, and the solution was to convert that area into a shallow groundwater bank, recharge water in a shallow area for use on the overlying land. Get rid of the deep wells that are below the corncan clay, those cause subsidence. Drill shallow lays, wells above the clay, those don't cause subsidence. Sink water into that zone so you can use it. So we did a study, they self-funded, we did a study, they started work on it. 2017, when flood flows came down the river, they recharge 60,000 acre feet of water in that ranch or in that area because of that project. They reduced subsidence to one-third of what it was during the peak since 2017. This is a project that we jointly developed with them. And so, and we also put in a pipeline underneath the river to help those guys bring in imported water to help them solve the subsidence problem. And this is a picture of that. This is a picture of the recharge area where they recharge 60,000 acre feet. For perspective, city's annual water supplies, what, 8,000 acre feet? Okay, so that's 60,000 acre feet in a year. So they built a reservoir basically in the underground, and they recharged it, they filled it up. And this is a picture of, I don't know why this amazes those guys so much, but this is that recharge basin. It's not like a huge reservoir where it's, you know, really deep. That's as deep as it needs to be right there. You just want to get water in that area, it's about 300 acres, and as the water sits there and sinks in the ground, it drops about six inches of water per day in the ground in this recharge basin. Our Orstember Creek project, our pilot project, is putting two feet a day in the ground. So there's some really successful recharge projects that are going on in this area that we're involved in. This is a picture of our outside canal, this is the old, the older subsidence in the area. That bridge in the 50s, you could take a boat underneath that bridge. Now the water surface is way above the road.
And that's near Mendota?
This is that, this is our Russell Avenue Bridge over the outside canal. We're working jointly with Fresno County to replace this bridge.
Wow.
And we're, we're going to be working on that at the end of the year. And then this is the, this is my next-to-last line, this is the part where we had, we had the general manager of the Friant Water Authority come over and talk to us about some visionary ideas about what's needed in California to overcome this water supply shortage that we're involved in. And they're actively pursuing it, they're asking for our participation and help, and we certainly are trying to do that. I'm sorry it took longer than 15 minutes.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The, the raising of the dam, so people have come up and they say, well, we're going to raise the dam for more storage, the San Luis Dam, and I tell them, no, that's not true. What they're doing is they're just raising the face in case it falls 15 feet in case of an earthquake. At least that's what I've understood. And we don't, we don't have any water, we don't get any water from that, right?
There's two... There's two potential projects there.
Uh-huh.
The first one, you're absolutely right, they're gonna raise the, raise the reservoir by ten feet, and it's a project, uh, it's a seismic, uh, project. Um, and so they're, they're on track to get that done, uh, but there is op, an opportunity on the backside of that to raise the reservoir another eight feet on top of that and actually get some storage out of it. Um, that is not a, a certain project, they're kicking the tires on it, the local agencies are trying to figure out whether or not they wanna participate in that and, and help pay for it. It's not a cheap project, it's a four to six hundred million dollar additional raise in order to be involved in that. But I do know there's a lot of local interest in looking at, uh, whether or not they can participate and, and make that happen. But you're absolutely right, the first project they're looking at is, doesn't add any capacity to San Luis, it just buttresses it, makes it safe.
Questions, counsel? Mr. Freer?
Uh, I'm just very pleased you, I'm very pleased you're here tonight with the kids.
Yeah.
Uh, because they're getting a tremendous education. Um, many of you, you hear about water, but you, the details, and don't realize how much, like C C I D and Mr. White and, and these organizations do, uh, to preserve the entire environment and preserve the agricultural industry, the civic life, your quality of life, it's very, very important. Um, just a comment, I grew up in Banta, in the Pescadero Water District, and I used to ask my uncle, what, and when I was a little boy, I said, why do we have to pay for the water? He said, cause this is reclaimed land. And, uh, so we have to pay for all this work that makes this land farmable, these canals, these pumps, and, um, it's why we're able to produce enough food to feed the whole world, uh, is because of this wonderful stuff. So I'm very pleased to see it, and I'm really pleased to hear that. Recharge, that's exciting. Um, that's, that's very exciting. And the other thing is, have we figured out a way yet to push the, to, to reverse subsidence?
No, you can't reverse the-
Can't reverse it, can you?
You, you can stop it.
You can stop it, but you can't reverse it.
It's, it's, there's two types, there's elastic and inelastic. The elastic, where it can recover, is a very, very small percentage of, of what happens.
That's what I figured. We don't have pressure pumps strong enough to, to push it all up. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Lewis?
Mr. Mayor, uh, Mr. White, uh, first of all, I wanna thank you for honoring my request to come and give us a report. Uh, there was a lot said that night that I didn't understand, but the one thing that I did hear was about the project that your organization was working with in conjunction with our city, uh, in regards to the water storage and the recharge for the city of Los Banas. And, um, for students' sake, you know, just the basic meaning of that for me was recharging the water in our community means that there's more water for us as residents to use here in the long term. Um, so, and again, I, the other thing is, I didn't know that there was a restaurant in El Nido called Red Top, I thought there was just a grocery store and a county fire station, so that, that's news to me. Um, so again, thank you, thank you for this presentation, and thank you for the work that your organization does to, uh, preserve water and, uh, also staying ahead of the game, you know? Uh, C C I D, um, has worked very hard to stay on top of whatever state and federal regulations are coming down so that we're not caught in a quagmire of being bogged down and not being able to do what the requests are. Um, and for our senior class here, I think it was indicated that, you know, there is money there through legislation to build dams in California, but nothing's been done. So as you become voting citizens here in California, those are things that you may wanna ask your legislators that you're voting for, is why the money is there to build the dams, it's on the book to build the dams, but they're not doing anything. They're not bringing that needed water to preserve into the valley that we need here so desperately so that we can continue farming, to provide food for not only the people who live here in the United States, but throughout the world. So those are important questions. Water is something that everybody needs to survive, you cannot live without water. Okay, thank you very much, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any other comments from counsel? Well, thank you so much for coming this evening, really appreciate this.
Thank you very much for having me.
Okay, is there any kind of tour that the counsel can take, or any, you know, kind of a, a little roundabout, uh, with a bus tour or something that we could see how the water system operates in this area?
Yes, the district hosts, uh, one or two tours a year, if you're interested in, in being involved in that, uh, we will work with Alex, and, uh, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, there is.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you.
You bet.
All right, there are no other questions, I'll go on to, uh, item eight, public hearing. If you challenge to propose action described herein in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Item eight A, public hearing, to receive public comment in consideration of a new Article nine, chapter three of the Los Banas Municipal Code regarding sidewalk vending in response to Senate Bill nine forty-six, Safe Sidewalk Vending Act. Item A, item eight A one, ordinance number one-one-seven-one, amending Title nine, chapter three of the Los Banas Municipal Code, adding the new Article forty-five to create sidewalk vending program, amending related provisions to the Los Banas Municipal Code, and making a determination of exemption under California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA. And this is a second reading and adoption. And we're gonna go to the city attorney, or we're gonna go to Stacy?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, there's a PowerPoint presentation with this item.
All right.
All right. So the first reading was back, uh, on April seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen, where the city council waived the first reading of this ordinance and introduced ordinance eleven seventy-one by title. Uh, just a little bit of background on, um, this particular item before you. Um, on January first, two thousand and nineteen, Senate Bill nine four-six, Safe Sidewalk Vending Act was adopted, um, and was, uh, made effective. Uh, essentially, what that, um, Senate bill did was say that cities could no longer prohibit sidewalk vending on city sidewalks. It allows cities to adopt some requirements regulating time, place, and manner of city, of, excuse me, of sidewalk vending, but it'd have to be directly related to health, safety, or welfare. So any requirements or regulations that the city would come up with had to directly relate to health, safety, and welfare. Um, S B nine four-six, uh, clearly states that the perceived community animus or economic competition are not valid health, safety, or welfare concerns. Um, so the, um, trying to regulate sidewalk vending or prohibit sidewalk vending, um, because it's competition with brick and mortar, is prohibited. Um, and a definition of sidewalk vending is any person who sells food or merchandise whole on a public sidewalk or other public pedestrian path, including parks. The proposed ordinance requires, and this is what's before you tonight, so, within your staff report, I'm gonna take a step back. Within your staff report, there is a list of elements that are, uh, within S B nine four-six, so what the law contains and what was, um, adopted within the Senate bill, and then we have what is before you tonight, so, and we've broken down what our proposed ordinance consists of. So our proposed ordinance consists of requiring an annual administrative permit to engage in sidewalk vending, and that, um, is in accordance with S B nine four-six. Uh, the law prohibits cities from requiring discretionary approval. So it prohibits cities from requiring, uh, planning commission or city council approval in order to obtain a sidewalk vending permit. So it'd be over the counter, um, staff would check an application, review the application, make sure, uh, the submittal is complete, and make sure it meets all of the findings of the ordinance before we could issue a permit, uh, but it would be issued by staff. It requires an indemnity agreement with the city of Los Banas, and that would, would be to allow the sidewalk vendor to vend on, uh, the city right away. It requires liability insurance, which is the same liability insurance that we require for mobile vending, um, and for commercial businesses, the minimum is a million-dollar policy. It prohibits sidewalk vending along sidewalks, pathways, courtyards, and grounds adjacent to the buildings and facilities that make up the Los Banas Community Center, City Hall, Los Banas Courthouse, Los Banas Library, Los Banas Police Station, and both fire stations, as well as the hospital, and along sidewalks of major streets, which include Pacheco Boulevard, Mercy Springs Road, Badger Flat Road, Pioneer Road, H Street, from Second Street to Badger Flat Road, also within the Los Banas Rail Trail Corridor and Canal Trail. So those areas, we have specifically prohibited sidewalk vending, um, for safety reasons. Um, also, the proposed ordinance prohibits sidewalk vending within any roadway median strip or dividing section. It restricts sidewalk vending in the vicinity of certified farmers' markets, swap meets, special events, schools, churches, playgrounds, or athletic fields. And it restricts stationary sidewalk vendors from vending in areas zoned exclusively residential. So within the ordinance, it distinguishes between a stationary sidewalk vendor, one that is at that same location vending from one spot, or a roaming sidewalk vendor that's moving throughout the community on the sidewalks. Uh, the proposed ordinance restricts hours of operation. Uh, essentially, if it's in a commercial zoning district, the hours of operation would be the same operation within the neighborhood. Um, and then if it's in a residential neighborhood, it's required to cease operations by seven P M. It requires proper trash disposal, so they need to be able to have, um, trash receptacles. And it sets forth numerous health and safety operational requirements and restrictions, and, um, that's related to that they have to obtain a health permit, they have to have safety inspections by the fire department if it's an open flame, um, so it has various health and safety, uh, requirements associated with it. And the permit process, like I said, it's going to be a ministerial action, so it'll be, um, done administratively, over the counter. It requires that the applicant provide us a valid Merced County Department of Health permit, that would be for all food vendors. They would have to provide a seller's permit from the Department of Tax and Fee Administration from the state of California. They'd have to obtain a city business license, and then they would need to show us proof of certificate of insurance. Uh, this particular item went before the Planning Commission, uh, which they held a public hearing on March twenty-seventh, two thousand and nineteen, and recommended approval on that date of the proposed ordinance to Los Banas City Council. So with that, staff is recommending that the city council waive the second reading and adopt ordinance number one-one-seven-one to amend Title nine, chapter three of the Los Banas Municipal Code, and add Article forty-five to create a sidewalk vending program. And that concludes my presentation, I'm here to answer questions.
Stacy, the, uh, restrict stationary sidewalk vendors from vending in areas zoned exclusively residential, so how, how does that interpret? What does that mean, restrict?
So if they're stationary, they're not moving, and that means that they would be setting up camp at one permanent location on the sidewalk, and that's prohibited in a residential district. So in a residential district, you have to be roaming, you have to keep moving. So for instance, if you had an ice cream push cart and you're on the sidewalk, you would, you can't just camp out on a particular sidewalk in a residential zone and stay there permanently, you would have to keep moving.
Okay.
You could conduct that action, that sale, conduct that sale, but you'd have to keep moving, you couldn't be stationary at any one location.
But that's no different from the bicycle guy riding around with a little ice cream cart in the back.
So the, uh, bicycle cart would be technically, because it's out on the street, is a mobile food vendor.
Okay.
The push cart would be on the sidewalk and therefore a sidewalk vendor.
But he's gotta push, he can't stay in one place on the sidewalk?
No, and so they, as well with mobile vending, they also have to keep roaming.
And each one of those has to have a health permit, liability insurance, and all this stuff.
Absolutely do, they do.
Yeah, okay.
They also have to have a background check, that's something that we're also requiring of this particular item, and that's consistent with mobile vending.
Okay. Um, all right, that's my question, any other questions from counsel? Yes, Mrs. Santos?
Um, I had a question, when they get their licenses and permits and whatnot, they would need to be, uh, posted on the safer, the icicle, uh, ice cream vendors, they would need to be posted on the outside of their vehicles or bikes or whatnot.
So the sidewalk vending unit would have to have the permit posted, um, and they would also have to have their business license posted in a, in a area that can be seen by the public?
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Jones?
Will the permit number be visible enough so, say, a code enforcement officer can't see it without actually stopping and interrupting the food vendor and run it to check to see if it's valid?
Yes, and so it will be at a location where they can see, but also, we are in coordination with code enforcement and letting them know when we issue a sidewalk vendor permit, we let them know on mobile vendors who's been issued permits, um, but they would be then know, notified of sidewalk vendors so that they know who is legal and who is not, um, so that they can be proactively, um, looking for, for vendors that are not vending correctly.
Thank you.
Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you. Uh, and follow up Stacy on, on, uh, Councilmember Jones' question, I would assume, depending on which direction they're going, uh, that permit is probably posted in front of the cart, not on the sides, uh, because if they're traveling north, south, east, and west on a sidewalk or a street, uh, you may or may not be able to see that permit.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, this question is for the Chief of Police, and, and I know this is, I believe, the second reading on, on this project, um, but I had a question in regards to, uh, page four of the presentation, and it talks about the various streets in the community and city, um, buildings where vending cannot, uh, take place, and it indicated, um, Badger Flat, um, Mercy Springs Road and Badger Flat, um, but I was surprised, uh, that Ortagalita was not indicated on here, even though there are no houses fronting, um, Ortagalita, neither are there on Badger Flat, and Badger Flat, I believe, the, the speed limit is a lot slower, but a lot faster on Ortagalita. So are they going to be allowed to vend up and down Ortagalita?
Councilmember, thank you for the question. Um, I think the safety factor for some of those roads that were excluded in this ordinance have to do with the lack of available sidewalk and a safe space for the vendors to navigate. Um, and the other part is, Badger Flat is a fifty-five mile an hour road compared to Ortagaliga, which has a school zone of twenty-five for a segment of it, um, I believe there's a thirty-five and a forty-five mile an hour segment, there's a stop sign. I, comparing those two streets and perhaps comparing it to Mercy Springs and/or Pioneer, Ortagaliga is, I'm less concerned with mobile vending or sidewalk vending on Ortagaliga than I am on any of those other streets that I've listed.
Not, not so much, um, Mercy Springs, I just brought that up as one of the ones that was listed here, but, uh, Badger Flat was the one, because, uh, south of Pacheco, it, uh, most of that's residential, you've got the roundabout there slowing traffic down, and, you know, I, I don't recall where the dumping out area is for Badger Flat right now, I think it circles back around to, uh, Cardoza.
I was gonna ask Stacy, does the prohibition go south of Pacheco?
So on Badger Flat, it's the entire length of Badger Flat, so all of Badger Flat Road. So the southern portion is, it, it, it has the slower segment of speed, but primarily our concern was the northern section of Badger Flat, which does not have sidewalks and is faster speed.
Okay, so being that it doesn't have sidewalks, then someone would be allowed to vend on just the dirt of Badger Flat, whereas on Ortagalita, they're not.
No, so they would have to be on the sidewalk, um, so Arco, for instance, if someone decided to have a sidewalk vending on, in front of Arco, that would be prohibited. It's improved surface, it has sidewalk, but with just the, the nature of that street, the other side of the street doesn't have sidewalk, it's higher speeds, it, it, to us, qualified as for safety factors being listed as a prohibited street.
Okay. All right, uh, so at this point, then someone would still be able to vend on Ortagalita?
Yes.
Okay.
Although I do wanna caution that they would have to have clearance for ADA purposes, and to just be able to, in, in, in realistic practicality terms- and to just be able to, in, in, in realistic practicality terms, Ortega Lita would not be an ideal location. It does not have extremely wide sidewalks to be able to have sidewalk vending on it. If it made any sense, it would probably be at the park, a cart on Cardoza, or even on Cardoza, which has a meandering path with 10-foot wide sidewalks, where you can have ADA access around that sidewalk vending unit. Ortega Lita has your standard residential sidewalks that you're probably not going to get a sidewalk vending unit. Cardoza would make much more sense.
All right, well, the reason I ask that question is because, again, as I said, the southern part of Badger Flat is residential, that small northern part is, you know, the, the extent of the sidewalk by Arco Gas Station is very short. So people can come out and be serviced by a sidewalk vendor in that area, but, you know, the way the traffic moves on Ortega Lita, it doesn't make sense, there's no place for anyone to pull over or be able to get anything from a, a vendor in that area, because it just, there's the two-lane traffic and there's, there's no bicycle lane, there's nothing for anyone to pull over. So that was my big concern with Ortega Lita, even though we have the school there and there's a certain speed zone, but once you get past that school, traffic clips pretty quickly until people get to that stop sign, and then, you know, beyond that, it's just going out into the county, and we have some city limits just before you get to Pioneer. So that, that was my biggest concern is, is to make sure that if the city had any control, that, that to me wouldn't be an ideal place to do any kind of vending.
Okay.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Stacy, question. The, the sidewalk vendors, so we have a, a daily or one that they could get for a day, right, or for a weekend permit?
No, not for sidewalk vending.
Not, not for sidewalk.
No.
Not for sidewalk. So if someone came up with an idea, they wanted a mobile flower cart, like they, you know, like the special permits that they have for day during Mother's Day and other things, then they would have to have, buy something that's going to be a permit, that's going to be a, a mobile flower business all year round?
If it's on the sidewalk and it meets the definition of a sidewalk vending unit, then, and it meets the definition of the ordinance, they'd have to get a sidewalk vendor permit and provide all of the documentation.
And all the liability insurance and everything. So the cost would be cost restrictive then in other words?
Well, it, that we're not considering temporary versus permanent, it's just one standard.
That's all right, that's, that's what I want to hear. That's what I want to hear. Okay, well, thank you. Any other questions from council? So before I forget, I'm going to open this to the public, and if there's anyone who wants to speak on ordinance number 1171, please come forward now. Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public hearing and bring it back to council level. Okay? And we're, we have two actions, to waive the second reading and for the adoption. Who'd like to do that? Mrs. Lewis.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to waive the second reading of ordinance number 1171 as read by title.
Do I have a second? Mrs. Santos?
Second.
Okay, it's been motioned by Lewis, second by Santos, to waive the second reading of ordinance number 1171. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Mrs. Lewis.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Here, let me punch you in.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1171 as read by title.
Mrs. Santos?
Second.
It's motioned by Lewis for the adoption of ordinance number 1171, read by title, and seconded by Mrs. Santos. And Director Maloney, roll call vote, please.
For Rio?
Yes.
Johnson, Santos.
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Paul Walton?
Yes, carried unanimously. Item number nine, consideration of adoption of City Council Resolution Number 6080, approving and authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding for the dedication of the future fire station site within Dove Hollow Villages at Stone Creek 7. And we're going to go to Fire Chief Hurley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I, I will, I appreciate the opportunity, but I will defer to our wonderful City Attorney, Mr. Vaughn.
Okay. Wonderful Attorney Vaughn.
Wonderful. Thank you, Chief, for the compliment, I think. Mayor, City Council, audience, this project started back in 2004 with the adoption of the Stone Creek Area Plan. That's Stone Creek South, which is the 400 acres plus or minus around the Walmart, Target area on the western, southwestern quadrant of the city. When that property was annexed into the city for housing development and other types of uses, it was determined through their environmental impact report that they would have to mitigate response times for fire service. And here we are, fast forward 16 years later, and we're, we're at that point. So the, the project has gone through all of the phases to the point where it's time for them to dedicate their, a fire station location to the city for a future fire station in that area. Stone Creek has worked very closely with Chief Hurley and our prior chiefs in locating the perfect location for this fire station, and I don't have a fancy PowerPoint tonight, but it's, it's in that south quadrant, close to 152, in what's going to be a future residential development. The agreement between the city and Stone Creek is that they are agreeing by July 1st of this year to execute what's called an irrevocable deed, dedication, which the city will have probably about 10 years to accept, and we probably will not accept it till the property in that area is built up and improved, but we could accept it at any time, approximately an acre, Chief, or less, less than an acre?
One point, one and a half acres.
Right. And so we, we wouldn't be accepting it simply because there would be no streets or sidewalks or any improvements to that location at that time, but at the time that area is actually mapped and improved and public improvements are, are built in that area, would be the time that we would be accepting that dedication and start planning to locate a fire station at that spot. The, there's a map in your packet that outlines the exact location based on the schematics of what that area will look like, maybe in the next 10 or 15 years. So we worked very hard in getting this put together, we've had a lot of cooperation with Stone Creek folks to, to get this done, and the next action you will see after tonight, after approving this MOU, will actually be the irrevocable offer of dedication coming through before July 1st, which like will be recorded, but the city is under no obligation to accept that until the city is ready to do so. So that's essentially what we have going on here with this item tonight. I'm here to answer any questions you might have. The chief did the picking out in terms of the location, so any, any questions regarding that should be directed to him.
Okay. Do I have any questions for City Attorney Vaughn or the, the chief? Not seeing or hearing any? Do I have a motion? Mrs. Lewis.
Okay, yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 6080 as read by title.
Okay, Mr. Jones?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Lewis, second by Jones, to approve City Council Resolution Number 6080 as read by title. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Item number 10, advisement of public notices, no reports tonight. Let's go on to City Manager Taraz's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple things, Mr. Dela Cruz, thanks again for bringing your class, didn't recognize you without your hat, but it is good to see you. Just, and also, secondly, this Saturday is our annual spring cleanup, 403 F Street, corner of Fourth and F Street. So we'll be accepting household hazardous waste as well as other materials at our annual spring cleanup. So don't miss that, the line usually gets pretty long, so get there early. And with that, I think that's it, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Let's go on to City Council member reports, item 12. Tonight, we'll start with Mr. Jones.
No report.
Thank you. And let's go on to Mrs. Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This past Friday, I had the opportunity to attend the United States Air Force Band of the Golden West at Pacheco High School. It was an outstanding performance. How many students here to, tonight were at that performance? Anybody? No? Okay, well, you guys missed a really good performance of, of the Air Force Band, which covers the Western Hemisphere. There are only two in the United States, one on the East Coast and the one out here out of Travis Air Force Base. So next time they come, which may be, I don't know, what, five years from now, you guys will be adults, you may want to attend if you're still here in Los Banos. I did attend the Measure V meeting yesterday, and I'll let the mayor expound on that one. I, I do feel that it was a good outcome for the city of Los Banos. I also had the opportunity to attend the National Day of Prayer on May 2nd, and it was well-attended by our community, and I want to thank all the pastors who participated in that event. And Sunday, May the 26th, will be a memorial service at the National Cemetery in San Joaquin. It's a great event, they have different speakers each year, well, most years they have different speakers, but they have different themes each year in honoring those who have served in our, our armed forces and have lost their lives as a result of serving. I believe the service starts at 10 o'clock, and that's Sunday, the 26th. And I, I think those are all my announcements this evening, Mr. Mayor. Oh, one more. I also attended at Pacheco High School Monday, the Los Banos Junior High School Choir Concert and Awards Assembly, and we have some really talented young people coming up who have beautiful voices and will feed into your school as well as maybe some of Los, Los Banos High School as well. But I'm really proud of the young people and their dedication to music and to the arts. And so with that, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, let's go on to Ms. Freya.
Thank you, Mayor. Nice to see everybody here, some of my students from Los Banos Junior High. I see a couple of you sitting out there, back when I used to teach over there, speaking of very good singers. And your teacher was a very good singer back in his day, he was in Sanger High School Choir, under the, under the direction of my schoolmate, Julie, now Julie Carter. And so that's how I met him, is when he was in high school, and I used to see him at choir festivals when I was teaching. And then we taught together at Los Banos Junior High for many years, and now you get the pleasure and the, the privilege of having him as a teacher there at Pacheco. It's very nice to see you all here, I hope you've gotten some good education tonight, some great presentations. Got a couple of concerts going on, Los Banos High School Choir. Tomorrow's our awards night, it's like a talent show, the kids just put on thing, whatever they want to do, they do, it's a random kind of a, they put it together, and we give out our awards, and that'll be at Los Banos High School, 7:00 tomorrow night at the MP Room, then Creekside Junior High's concert, that concert's going to be on May 28th, that's a Tuesday night, or the day after Memorial Day, and that'll be at 7:00, no charge for any of these. And then Memorial Day is May 27th, and we normally have a Los Banos Cemetery service in the morning there. I haven't seen any info on it yet, but I'm, I'm sure it will be forthcoming, because they all, the veterans always put on a beautiful ceremony there. Finally, so you may have gotten the Prop 13 letter in the mail, folks. I, I had people saying, oh, you guys are going to raise a race, which you didn't, you didn't tell us. I said, well, yeah, we did. This is the letter, it has the city address right there, so read the Proposition 218 letter, it, instructions about how to go about, if you have any opinions for or against that, you're, read your, read your packet. But it has been sent in the mail, and if you missed it, that's what it looks like. And with that, I'm very pleased, one more thing, very pleased also with, I was only there for a little while yesterday of the Measure V meeting, I'm sure the mayor will expound on that, but that's the money for the highways, the sales tax for the highways. And it was very good, very good meeting, and I think you'd all be very pleased to see how all the various representatives in the area discussed moving money around in millions of dollars. So it's a big responsibility, and it was beautifully done. So thank you for, all for being here tonight, thank you for everybody watching, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Santos?
Thank you very much. Just one thing, I'd like to thank the city and also Merced County Association of Governments for allowing me to go on the One Voice trip. It was a very, it's a trip to Washington, D.C., where we were able to sit down with a few of the departments and try to let them know what the city needs and just our valley needs, and it was, it was very good talking to a lot of theirs, very enjoyable and an interesting trip, especially for my first trip, so thank you once again, and that's all I have today, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Well, we have some exciting news, and for years, all of us on this council have received so many complaints about all the traffic on Highway 152. And right now, 40,000 cars a day go through Los Banos in various forms. So when Measure V was passed, Measure V had two pots of money. The city puts in, the city residents of Los Banos who passed Measure V, we put in $2.5 million a year in a, in the form of a half a cent. A half a penny raises $2.4, $2.5 million a year, and it's climbing. So that money, $800,000 of that comes back to the city of Los Banos to go into a local pot where we take that money and we spend it on various road projects and improvement projects within the city of Los Banos that are road-related or sidewalk-related. The other portion of that money, 1.745 million, goes into a regional pot. And that regional pot then is voted on by five members, and five members of the West Side Committee, which is west of the San Joaquin River, and that is the city of Gustine, one representative, the city of Dos Palos, one representative, the city of Los Banos, one representative, the supervisor representing the Gustine area, and the supervisor representing the Los Banos area. So we have a list of projects. Gustine has projects, Dos Palos has projects, the county has projects. And if you go out to Henry Miller Road, you'll see that if you go to Henry Miller and 165, and you turn right, you'll see it's all new paved road. And that was done with Measure V funds. And then we have taken Measure V funds and, and we are, we got a, received a grant of $600,000, of which we're putting towards a college pathway, which will be of interest to you individuals, students, because at some point in the very near future, very near, what would you say, Mark, two, two, three years? For the pathway?
The construction of the pathway? Let me look real quick, I have, 22, 23 is construction.
Okay, 22, 23, construction of a pathway from where Badger Flat leaves off to the Merced College. And that will be a safe pathway for bicycles, for pedestrians, skateboards, whatever, and you'll have a way to get out to the college if, if someone wants to, to go that route. We'll also have bus service and, and actually cars, but, but now we'll have a safe pathway for people to go out who are not able to, to do it any other way or would like to bike out there. So that project is a $2.2 million project, and we've received $600,000 to date. So the other day, we received $1.6 million to complete that project. In fact, it was yesterday. Then the, the other real, real good news is that we are now have a means to an end of diverting traffic off Highway 152, and that is going to be Pioneer Road. And we'd like to have Pioneer Before Lane instead of the two-lane it is now. We'd like to have Pioneer before Lane, instead of the two-lane it is now. So, local traffic, and however we devise, the traffic pattern is going to be, it's going to take cars off of Highway 152, of which there are 40,000 cars. That project, to get it to shovel-ready, shovel-ready is a term meaning that it is ready for construction. And it involves two phases. It involves the planning and design, which is $3.9 million, and the right-of-way acquisition, which is, 4.3? Is that close? 4.3 million. So, we've got $8.2 million, plus the 600,000, plus the 1.6 million. So, yesterday, we were programmed for almost $10 million. And that money is going to be given to us in phases by year in order to get us to be shovel-ready for the Pioneer Trail, to divert traffic off Highway 152. This is the closest we've ever been to doing that, and I have to tell you that I am so, so proud of this council. This council saw the need for that project. This council, in phases unanimously approved every step of the way of how this should be constructed. City staff onboard as to how we can phase this project in order to get it done. Once we get to shovel-ready, we are able to ask Caltrans for the additional 45 million, 45 million, in order to build the road. But without getting it to shovel-ready, and without the planning and design, without the right-of-way purchase, Caltrans won't even look at us. That stoplight over by 11th Street, going to the high school, that was a million dollars. Can you believe that? For a couple of red lights, a million bucks? So, and that's going to be torn out in a few years, and they're going to put in a stoplight, which is about 3 million? About 3 million for a stoplight. So, this is how Caltrans works. They put things in, they tear them out, and then improve them. So, things are very expensive, but we have a start, we have a goal, we have a means to finish and complete that goal. So, council, I just have to tell you, yesterday was a good day, and thank you to all the citizens, elected and non-elected, staff who showed up to promote this project and to, I mean, just, I mean, everything that we've been trying to do all these years, it came to a good ending yesterday. A good beginning, I should say, not a good ending, a good beginning. So, I just want to thank all of you for every part of everything that you've contributed. And it's up to future generations to make sure that you keep building on this town, and you keep building positively. If you're going to make this your home, then be part of it. So with that, oh, also, the Air Force Band, I went, attended that concert, absolutely excellent. The Pacheco High School, again, I'll see you Friday night, and if you want me to serve at your table, come and grab me. Hey, so, is anyone else serving that night, too? Here? Ms. Freya? Mr. Johnson? Santos? Anybody else? And Mrs. Lewis? You're serving, too? Okay. All right, well, thank you. So, everybody's here. So with that, I would like to go to closed session. And closed session is conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. Agency-designated representatives, City Councilor Trazas, City Attorney Vaughn, City Clerk, Human Resources Director Maloney, Finance Director Williams, Legal Counsel Tufo, Employee Organizations, Los Banos Public Employees Union, Public Works Local 1/AFSCME, and Unrepresented Miscellaneous Employees. And Item B, Conference of Real Property Negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8. Property located at 1624 San Luis Street, Los Banos, California, APN 428070001. Portion, approximately 12,785 square feet. City negotiators, City Manager Trazas, City Attorney Vaughn, City Finance Director Williams. Negotiating parties, Merced County Action Agency, CEO Callahan-Johnson, under negotiation. Purchase price in terms of sale. And adjourned to, Item 14, adjourned to 6:00 p.m. Wednesday, May 22, 2019, at the Los Banos Community Center, located at 645 7th Street, Los Banos, California, to conduct a joint study session with the City Council regarding legislative updates to the General Plan Update 2040. And adjourned to 5:00 p.m. Thursday, May 30, 2019, in the City Council Chambers, 520J Street, Los Banos, California, to attend the 2019, 2020 fiscal year budget workshop. And so, action, motion. So, could I please have a closed session? There's no, nothing there? I mean, nothing to approve yet. So, if we have anything to report on closed session, we will do so after. And Item A, adjournment. Do I have a motion for adjourn? Oh, you want to do that at the end? Okay. All right, just before we log off? Okay. All right. So, we're going to wait to do that at the end. So, if we have anything to report for closed session, we will do that after closed session. So, people from Pacheco, students, thank you for coming tonight. Ask us any questions that you'd like to ask us, or invite us to your classrooms.
Motion by Lewis.
Second.
Second by Veronica Johnson Santos. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any, anything else? Okay, meeting adjourned at 9:38. Okay. All right. Mics on.
Your microphone's on.